Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this evening's council meeting. It's 7:00. And it seems like we've had this national wave of bad news at the last couple of meetings. With the events at Las Vegas earlier this week. We continue to have bad news, don't we? So it's not hurricanes or earthquakes tonight, but let's keep our best thoughts, wishes, prayers as we reflect silently on those folks who are still challenged from the events Thank you very much. And now, Pledge of Allegiance. Deborah Hope, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. One of the perks of this job is I get to do these proclamations, mayoral proclamations. And tonight, we're going to recognize one of our stalwart partners and best ambassadors in the history of Buchanan, the Turner family at Gamble Amusements. So Ted and Shane, would you come up, please, and join me up front here? I've got something for you both. And Deborah, on behalf of the Strawberry Festival, I'd like you to come up and join us, too, if you would. I don't know if you all know Shane and Ted. Ted's, I've known him for years, wearing the city attorney hat.
We'd like him to walk us out.
Come on, get in there. This is a mayor's proclamation. I've actually got two of them framed for you. These are the deluxe 98 cent frames. We spared no expense. Whereas Gamble Amusements has provided fun and entertainment to the people of West Virginia through their traveling carnival and famous midway foods since 1941, when Quinn, Ken, and Lola gambled, I checked out the website, I know these things. Of Wintersville, Ohio, first introduced pony rides to local fairs, festivals, and picnics. And whereas Gamble Amusements, through their owners, the Turner family, and particularly Ted and Shane Turner, have maintained a recurring presence in Buchanan for decades, particularly during our community's annual strawberry festival, held during each May. And whereas Gamble Amusements just partnered with our city to produce the inaugural Fall Fest from September 27 through 30, 2017, which was well received by our residents. And whereas Gamble Amusements representatives have long served as excellent ambassadors for our Buchanan Upsher community, wherever they travel, lauding their strawberry festival and City of Buchanan partners, as well as our residents and fine quality of life here. And whereas Gamble Amusements contributions to our community are indicative of our citizen and business ownership in and respect for community activities, and represent the very finest example of our high quality of life enjoyed by our residents and visitors alike. And whereas our city is very proud of one of its most accomplished visiting businesses and community partners that steadfastly epitomizes positive thinking, dedication, and accomplishment, while providing affordable fun and entertainment for our BU community. And now desires to recognize Gamble Amusements and the Turner family for their longtime support and outstanding contributions to Buchanan by bestowing upon them our city's ambassador's award. Now therefore, I, as mayor of the City of Buchanan, pursuant to the power and authority duly vested in me, do hereby proclaim Thursday, October 5, 2017, to be Gamble Amusements and Turner Family Day throughout our City of Buchanan. To further memorialize the Turner family's devotion to and affinity for their home away from home, the Buchanan community, I further now hereby bestow upon them the Buchanan Ambassador Award, thus being but our city's 18th recipient and honoree of this most prestigious honor and award. Appropriately, I direct the installation of a permanent placard upon the ambassador's bench on East Main Street in front of our city's Stacker Youth Center to permanently honor Gamble Amusements and the Turner family, the bench bearing the inscription and legend, "The Ambassador's Bench," honoring those who selflessly dedicated their lives to the service, promotion, and advancement of Buchanan. I further urge all of our residents to greet and recognize our city's most honored friends, Gamble Amusements and the Turner family, along with their friends and supporters, and all members of our city government family during their most special day, given under my hand and official seal of the City of Buchanan this 5th day of October, 2017, signed by me as mayor. We couldn't do that strawberry festival without you guys.
Thank you very much.
You want us in there together, huh? I don't feel so short with the big time turn around. Deborah still are all at the mid-range, right? Is Mr. Ted Turner and Mr. Shane Turner? You wouldn't be able to tell if they were.
And what was your first name?
Shane. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thank you all very much. Continuing to have you here, having the time again. Thanks a lot. Safe travels back to the Forest Festival.
Go back to work.
That's right. Thank you very much. Is that right? Wow. What'd you say?
First year I met them, I was pregnant.
Oh, really? We have a couple, I think a couple of Wesleyan students here. Maybe you're only, you might be the only guy tonight, Mr. Miles. What happened to the other folks that were supposed to be here? It's our custom that you stand and give your name, hometown, and your major course of study at Wesleyan here at Mr. Porter's camera, so that people tomorrow night on Channel 3 can look at you and say, boy, that's a nice looking college.
I'm Dylan Miles. I'm from John City, Tennessee, and I'm a business administration major.
Sure. Thank you. Glad you're here. Okay. Laura Meadows has not bugged out, but she is running late with another event, so we're going to take her up here in just a little bit. Susan McKissick, the nurse director for the Upsher County Health Department, is here. And Ms. McKissick, you want to come forth and address the council? Welcome to City Council.
Thank you for inviting me.
Glad you're here. That's perfect.
I'm here my first time, and I'm hoping that we can start to make a difference in our community. I'm going to lost the words. Sorry.
You're fine.
We have begun a naloxone slash Narcan training program. We are able to train people within our community. The Health Department has held three of these trainings at Core Heart Refactories. They have asked us to come back and hold one more. And I was here about a month ago for a meeting, was invited, and it was a manager's meeting, and then Amberly told me that I was invited to come to this meeting. I have bought a medical director, Dr. Reed, our medical director at the Health Department, who has agreed to sign off. And I have a training set up for the City of Buchanan Police Department and the Sheriff's Department at the Public Service Complex on November 9, 10:00 in the morning. So we are going to get law enforcement trained. West Virginia State Police have their own training in Charleston. They will be given this naloxone slash Narcan to administer. This is a medication that is administered nasally, what we have, so there's no real invasiveness to the patient, to bring them out of an opioid overdose. It will only work on opioid overdoses, which is fentanyl, heroin, suboxone, oxycodone, oxymorphone, codeine, several things that are of the opioid background. And it blocks the receptors in the brain so that everything stops. These people come out of their coma overdose state, hopefully with just one or two doses. Sometimes it takes many more. But also, these people have to be watched. They have to be taken to an emergency room after they have given this. So it's not a good thing to have it, and then say, well, we don't want anyone to know, so we're going to do this. Because as soon as that person comes out of that, they're going to fight, they're going to want to get that high back, or that feeling of euphoria back. So they're going to try and try. This medication lasts for 30 to 45 minutes. So then, when this medication wears off, they're back in an overdose state. And maybe they have consumed enough, whether it's shooting up, taking pills, whatever, to really put them over the edge, and then they may not be able to be revived. We don't want that. But West Virginia, right now, is number one in the nation, in the United States, for overdoses. Our little state compared to New York City, big cities in California, we are number one in the country for overdoses. We're part of that Appalachian quarter. We are number one in the nation for chronic hepatitis B and hepatitis C. We are number one in the nation in newly acquired hepatitis B, hepatitis C, and HIV cases. A lot of this is due to needle use. So I'm in the process, I'm working with some other counties in the state who have harm reduction programs. I am going to be going around to a lot of places and speaking and asking for help, maybe have a forum where we can have people from all over the community, law enforcement, city officials, county officials, community programs, and factories, whatever, we have business owners, operators, to come together to help this county, to help protect it, to help get us where we need to be, and try to get this stopped. In the harm reduction program, Huntington, which they were the first in the state to have one, several other counties have followed. They're on a much larger scale than us, but in Huntington, they started it out with one day a week. One hour, one day a week. Now they are up to five hours, one day a week. Of course, they're in the hug where they have Ohio, Kentucky, and West Virginia. But Lewis County just started one not too long ago. Harrison County started one. Barber County's going to start theirs. And I'm working on getting one started for us. We would have a needle exchange program, and it would be needle for needle. I give you 40 needles, you bring 40 back if you want 40 more. You bring 10 back, you only get 10. You'd be given a sharps container, alcohol pads, to discourage the use of sharing needles. So I know that we are going to get opposition, because a lot of people are going to say, you are just feeding them, you are encouraging. No, we are trying to stop the bloodborne pathogens, the Hep B, Hep C, and HIV. And the sad thing about it is these people that are doing this, and these females that are pregnant, they are having babies delivered that are Hep B, Hep C, and possibly HIV. They've already contracted that, and they are addicted. So there's several problems there with pregnant women sharing needles and being pregnant. Bad enough with them using drugs, but also with the shared needles. So we do want to kind of squash it here in Upsher County. I know it's going to be a large set of shoes to fill. We also will be doing testing for sexually transmitted diseases, which we do those at the Health Department now. But that will be part of the harm reduction program. We will offer condoms, which we offer now, but that's also part of the harm reduction program, and will stop the use or transmission of sexually transmitted diseases. Also, we would like to get a counselor available. The bigger cities have counselors available. Counselors can talk to them, but when a person is in a time of crisis, they want help, they want it now. They don't want to be given a business card and saying, well, call this number, they can get to you, they'll take care of you. And the beds are so overcrowded in this state that there is a waiting list. So time is of the essence for the state to pull together, the counties to pull together, the cities to pull together, see what we can do to find more beds, to build more facilities, whatever. Because we are in a state of epidemic proportions. And the reason some of this started is, it's a two-edged sword, I guess you would say. Pharmaceutical companies developed oxycodone, oxycodone, and they did closed studies. They did a study on people that were in the hospital for open heart surgery, different things like that. Well, as you heal and get better, you have less of a need for a painkiller. So these people were in this environment, tested only in the hospital, five days, seven days, they were released from the hospital. They did not need that medication. So the companies that developed these said, it's non-narcotic. You're not going to get hooked on it. It is not addictive. Yeah, it's a narcotic, but it's not addictive. We don't know what made these properties this way, but no problems. So the doctors started treating grandma and grandpa that have arthritis, different things like that. You have an accident, you get hurt, these aren't addictive, we're going to give you some medicine. When you come back, I still got the pain. Well, do you have the pain, or do you like the feeling? We don't know. And as a nurse, I was always taught, patient's pain is what the patient says it is. So anyone else in the healthcare field, if they're going by that, they're going to believe the patient that it is what they say it is. So we continue to give them medications. Well, then these people become addicted to them. Well, now the pharmaceutical companies are saying, you doctors have caused this. You wrote scripts, and wrote scripts, and wrote scripts. And the doctors say, but you told us that it was non-addictive. You know it's not going to affect you. So both people are at fault. But now, we have a problem, and we're having trouble getting rid of it. So now, when the people cannot get the pain medication, because the doctors are not writing them, pharmaceuticals are being come down on by the FDA, the doctors are being come down on by the FDA and the pharmacy boards and stuff. And I noticed CBS just started a program, that they're only going to give you seven days at a time. And if they feel that the doctors prescribe too much or too high of a milligram dosage, they're going to call the doctor and say, hey, we're not going to prescribe it, or you can rewrite a script. So anyways, it has become a problem. But when you can't get the pills, you start using heroin. And some of the heroin coming into this country is not good stuff. And the fentanyl patches, they're using fentanyl, there's I don't know how many forms of fentanyl now, because we have so many chemists and people that know how to develop this stuff that is unreal. But not only is it affecting people with addiction, and I feel for those people, because there is a problem, they can't get away from it, they do need help, maybe the help is not there when they feel they need it, or when they're at their lowest and ready for it. So, you know, I don't know what the answer is. We need to give support. I used to feel that, you know, you can stop, but no, you can't stop. It's just as bad as being addicted to that cup of coffee, or to that cigarette, or whatever. But also, my concern is law enforcement, EMS, first responders, firefighters, whatever, is there are so many incidences now that they pull a car over, they go through that car, they find these drugs. Well, it may not affect them until they get back to station, and someone says, hey, you got something on your shirt, and they wipe it off. Well, because it's absorbed, then you have a law officer going down. There was five nurses in an ER not too long ago in Ohio that were overcome with fentanyl powder on a patient that was brought in, and they collapsed in the ER. So, you know, it's good that there were other people there. So it's going to serve law enforcement, EMS, firefighters, if they want to have this training here also, to have it for their fellow partner, fellow officer, whatever. And I just hope that we can get something going, that we can, the state is in the process of starting a coalition. I'd like to see one started within the county, or within a couple of the neighboring counties to help with things. I did speak with Susan Aloy from Wesleyan College, and I don't know a lot of things as far as what interns and stuff do, but I have contacted her, and we are going to try to see if we can find someone there that needs a project to do before they graduate, or whatever, to possibly help us find grants or money for this, because this is not a state-supported activity. The state will provide the STD testing, the blood draw for the STD testing, the state provides condoms. They are not going to provide needles, they are not going to provide sharps containers, they're not going to provide rubber gloves, they're not going to provide alcohol wipes. So that has to come out of somebody's pocket. And for fiscal year 2017, every health department in the state took a 20% funding cut from the state. So there's just not the monies to buy these things. And to really break it down to find out what it would cost per person for X amount of needles, sharps container, this and that, I haven't really done that. I've assumed some other duties at the Health Department at this time. So that's not my top priority in this last week or two. But I will tell you that everyone in our Health Department is for this. Our Board of Health backs us on this. Dr. Reed backs us on this. And I am hoping, once I get our law enforcement trained, also, Division of Natural Resources is interested in the training, because I guess they assisted with a drug bust or a drug raid not too long ago, and they're concerned for their people. And so we're going to get them trained, and then I'm going to start within the community. But I feel these people are first responders, sometimes a law officer may come across somebody who is down in the street or the sidewalk, and think, hey, what's going on? Well, if they can't rouse them, then, you know, they can try this. If they are administered the naloxone or the Narcan, and it's not an opioid, this is not going to hurt these people one bit. There's no allergic reaction ever been linked to this. You're going to have a runny nose because somebody sprayed something, and your nose is the consistency of water. But the mucous membranes are so much easier to absorb this. And the kits that we will be giving out to law enforcement and to the community when we start the community trainings, they have enough in them for two adult doses or four children's doses. And I've had some people say, well, why would you need to include or even bring up children? There was not too long ago, a thing on the news, a lady in Fairmont, her three-year-old got into her purse and overdosed on her mother's suboxone, and the baby ended up dying. So that's why we need to. We need to be very cautious and very careful. And I also recommend that everybody go home and clean out your medicine cabinets, anything that is expired. You can come to the Health Department, we have bags that we can put that medication in, or you can put it in. We put a little bit of liquid in it, it's water, it's got charcoal in it, and it makes those pills no longer any good, it deactivates them. It can be thrown in your regular garbage, that prevents it from going into the sewer system, the water system, septic systems, or into hands where it's not needed.
Couple of questions for you. Narcan has been around for longer than a decade. Why are agencies in West Virginia slow to come to the table when other places, some not very far from us, have had their first responders carrying this drug for, you know, years and years?
I have no idea. I don't know if it's something related to, they feel that they don't have the education, the knowledge. I was a volunteer with the Upsher County Emergency Squad for 25 years and ran as an EMT. I remember 25 years ago, when our paramedics had it. The paramedics were the only ones to do it, and the paramedics did it IV. So I don't know if they have developed it now, so it can be administered nasally, if it took that long for them to develop it, I don't know. Now, I know in some states, some EMTs, they're called EMTPs, they can go ahead and start IVs. Now, whether they could actually push that medication, I do not know. But maybe because it used to be just an intravenous medication, I'm not sure.
Questions for Ms. McKissick?
The legislature has legalized marijuana, which I think it won't go into effect in 2019. And I've heard that it's going to be very restrictive, they only can get it six or seven different places. But do you know much about that, Susan, what the opportunities? So I read an article in National Geographic about a year and a half ago, saying that there's some very interesting research that will help many, many people that are addicted to these painkillers, that marijuana would be a much preferable substitute. Do you know anything about that at all?
I've read some articles on that, that, yeah, it can come close to that feeling of euphoria. But I know the medicinal marijuana is not the same as just the marijuana that you buy and that you smoke, or people put into brands, or whatever. I think some of the medicinal marijuanas are cultivated different, or manufactured different, filtered. I don't know exactly what it is.
There's 500 varieties of marijuana, which I didn't realize, so that's pretty interesting.
I didn't know how many, but I knew there was more, there were several, but I didn't know there was that many.
And I've talked to, I have some friends who are doctors, and they are so upset about the occurrences of babies being born that are addicted. And they, a couple of them who are friends of mine, I won't name them who they are, but they said, you know, David, she said, it almost gets to the point where, when the baby's being delivered, that you want to continue surgery and sterilize the female, because they'll do it again. And, you know, that's an issue, that I think, we don't want to talk about these very difficult issues. We tend to bury our heads in the sand. But, you know, we do have an epidemic. And, you know, I'm an old person, but I have kids and grandkids, and I worry about the kind of society that we're going to have in the future. And how do we, how do we deal with this? I don't think we have the answers right now, but we've got to come together as a group of people to sit down and talk about things common sense, and not just through, you know, very, a lot of people insult when you, as soon as you know that your person's on a drug. They get lambasted, so to speak. But I want to solve the problem, and I think we're a long way from doing that. But I appreciate you coming here. I don't know how you can, in your profession, it's, you've got to have a very, you have to have the right kind of aptitude to do what you're doing. I would think it's very challenging to say, to feel good.
Well, that part is true, and like I had told them in the manager's meeting, and I've told them when I've done the naloxone training at Core Hearts, and I will continue to tell them. I used to work in the ER, I saw a lot of these people come in like this. And I would think, you know, you were just here last week, you were just here last week.
That's what my son says. He works in the ER, he said, Dad, 65% of the ER patients now, he works, he works in the North Carolina town, he said, 65% are because of overdoses. He said, oftentimes, when they, you know, get the medication to help them, they bolt out of the hospital, they don't even check out. He said, they'll see them again in two, three weeks. It's scary.
Well, it is, and I've been on that side of it. And when this talk started a few years back, since I became employed at the Health Department, I thought to myself, you know, why are we going to do this? But about five minutes later, I thought to myself, you're a nurse, your job is to help people, you need to think about this. So I did some soul searching, and I've come to the conclusion that that person that may be in a state of overdose, or a state of addiction, can be your child, can be someone's grandchild, can be someone's brother. It can be our mother or father. It can be a grandparent that not even realized that they are addicted, and just have forgotten because they are on pain medication for arthritis, or back problems, or some kind of chronic problem, that they forgot because they are getting older, and they took their medicine at 1:00, and then they took it at 2:30. You know, and it was just too much for their bodies to handle. And so you may go into their home, because you've tried to call mom, or dad, or grandma, or grandpa, and they don't answer, and you know they're always home at this time. And you find them. Well, if you've had training, and you have one of these kids, you can help. But, yeah, it took me a little bit of soul searching. But I look at it now as, this is my job, I love my job, and my job is to continue to help people.
I appreciate what you do, and others in your profession, the first responders, what they're doing, helping us.
Another question for you. Is there a log, or is there a tracking mechanism for how many folks in our community in Upsher County, for instance, have received Narcan? Is there, is that something that's tracked by the Health Department?
Now, the training that myself and Kristy Iker, my other nurse at the Health Department, the training that we do, we do have to have them sign in, we do have to have their last four of their social. This does go to the Office of Emergency Management.
Now, the people that actually had Narcan administered to them, or they Now, the people that actually had Narcan administered to them, or the people who are trained?
Well, both, both.
Okay, okay.
So anyways, someone comes in, you know, we train them, they have a number. It's submitted to the state, so these people are considered trainers also. They can train. So if I turn someone at the fire department, they can train everybody there. But also, when this person is administered, there's a little card in the kit. And the person that administers it has to give a name of the person that it was given to. If it was one dose, two doses, if it was drug overdose that you know of for sure, if it was just unresponsiveness and you attempted it. And then they are supposed to submit that to poison control. I tell them, you bring it to me at the health department. I will submit it to poison control for you. I will make sure it's completed correctly, and it's only like five or six questions. And also, I will see that you get another kit to take with you when you leave. So that if you're ever in that situation, you'd have.
Do you have any raw data, any numbers that you can throw at us for 2016 or 2017 year-to-date on the number of folks that have had Narcan administered in Upsher County?
No, I don't have that, because the emergency squad or St. Joseph's Hospital does not have to report that to us. But I do have a thing that, I have a graph, and it's kind of hard to see, so I just kind of memorized it. Overdoses, as of June 15th, the state of West Virginia, Upsher County rates 38 out of 55 counties. So that part's good, but that can always change. And Lewis County and Barber County were ahead of us. So that's usually a good sign, because they're our neighboring county. Not a good sign, but.
Right. It's, as bad as it is here.
Yes, worse there.
Worse in a lot of other places. This is all about that?
Well, I'm going to link on to what you were saying. If it's not reported to the other people, other than the OEM, or whoever it is, it could be, very easily, couldn't it?
Yes.
I mean, it's not confidential or anything, is it?
Yeah, I'm not looking to identify.
By names, just how many.
It's just to support this problem that we have. If 20 people a month are receiving Narcan, or whatever the number is, might be interesting data. How do we know that we're going to improve this situation if we don't have that benchmark data to start the discussion?
Exactly. I understand, and that's part of a lot of the questions that I have when I'm going to meet with these larger counties that have started it and had their program going for quite a while. I'm sure that I could probably get with St. Joe's, I'm sure they have to, since they're part of WVU now, keep some kind of numbers. I serve on the board of EMS here in Buchanan, so I can also check with them. I don't know if they're keeping data on that, but I can encourage that.
Like you said, Mary, it'd be just the numbers, not names and people, like that. That's too confidential, but.
Pam, you have a question or comment?
Is there a timeline to how close somebody can receive Narcan? Like, if somebody receives it one day, can they get it again the next day?
Oh, yeah, they could.
There's folks that have it administered more than once a day.
Really?
It's happened before.
And is there such a thing as you can always get it and it still works?
As far as I know, there's been some people that's taken eight doses at one time before they've been brought out of the overdose state or the coma state. I know that it's been logged that they've received eight doses at one time.
I do not think that they can get the mindset that, oh.
Say it again, Pam.
I said, do people get the mindset that I can do what I want, because I live in this coma state, day after day?
Well.
I'm not sure what kind of mindset they get.
Well, you know, I'm a drug user.
I mean, no fear.
Yeah.
No fear of dying.
If you're in a comatose situation by yourself, you die.
Because you can administer it to yourself.
You've got to have somebody else there to, you know, call someone to administer this.
And like I had said before, the effects of it last 30 to 45 minutes. So if someone has tried to get that high back, by the time that their Narcan has worn off, if you have it taken into an ER, or they say, Mom, Dad, I'm just going to go to my room and sleep it off. I'm really sorry, I didn't mean to do this. And they're using, and they can't get that high back, they are going to overdose again once that goes off, because they have tried and tried, and probably administered more to themselves than what caused them to overdose initially.
We encourage you to work with our emergency first responders, especially Chiefs Gregory and Townsend. At the last city council meeting, this council unanimously resolved to support this partnership with you and Matt Carner at Opportunity House, and whoever else we can rally the troops around.
Well, that's what we need.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'd like to see that number somehow reported, so we do have a benchmark start place.
I will work on that.
Right, Narcan is at the end of the cycle. We've got to figure out how to get people, so they don't have to have it.
It's a Band-Aid.
Exactly.
A solid.
It's my book.
I posted a video of a fire department in Pennsylvania where they were going, it's costing them so much money, they were going to stop carrying Narcan. A lot of the responses were that, you know, I made the comment as, you know, allow a person to die, question mark?
Yeah.
And a lot of the comments were this, you know, what do you mean allow? This is a self-directed act. And who's, why, you know, the municipality responsible for the thousands of dollars to pay for these things? But I don't really see it that way. I mean, if there's something that we have, that we can bring this person back from death, even self-directed or otherwise, would you, would you not stop someone trying to jump off a bridge?
Yes.
And so, but there is that thought process out there, people that haven't been impacted by these, this issue. And so I'm in support of what you're trying to do, and whatever we can do to help you.
Do you know why some people have the thoughts of self-directed? Because, yeah, it is. But it's just like that old Indian saying, don't judge me until you've walked a while in my shoes. And these children, adults, people that use, are addicted. What kind of a childhood did they have? Were they sexually abused? Were they physically abused? Were they mentally abused? Were they all three? Were they left to bring themselves up and never really know right from wrong, because that's all they saw out of mom and dad, was them shooting up, or smoking pot, or drinking, doing drugs? I don't know. You know, there's a lot of things. What are you trying to do? Do you think this is healing your body? And a lot of people really do. That's why it is imperative that we have counselors available, so that when these people are in a state of crisis, that they have someone that can deal with them on that level, and help talk them out of this, help get them the help that they need, get them set up. Some of these people may have mental health issues and don't even know it, and may need to be on a medication for mental health issues.
I'd say that, that's a certainty.
Yes.
And I think we really miss the ball, well, on service, servicing people with mental health needs, the stigma attached to that, and there just really isn't, you know, much open-minded counseling out there.
And it is, it is sad, but I hope that we can all pull together. I know that Jerry and some of the other department managers are going to have that training also, so they can have it in their trucks. I'm also going to give them training on proper handling of sharps if they come across these, because I know a lot of people have them, you know, call up and say, hey, I've got needles in my front yard, somebody was by here last night, you know, what are you going to do about it? And I'm going to offer them some training for, to kind of help cut down on workers' compensation claims and possible bloodborne pathogens and stuff.
Thank you, Ms. McKissick. We look forward to working with you, and every little dent in this problem helps a little bit, so.
Thank you for inviting me.
Thank you.
Thank you for having you again. Department and Board reports. Jerry Arnold, would you like to bring us all your good stuff?
Laura's here. Laura's here, too.
He's already called.
Laura is here, isn't she? Sorry, Jerry's.
I don't care.
Jerry's got an important engagement. He's got meatloaf tonight, or something like that.
Really?
We can wait for you.
That's the greatest, too. Yeah, something great.
Go ahead, Jerry. I'll be right through with you, all right?
No problem.
See you sneaking in.
The theater floor demolition is complete. Pier foundation will be pulled tomorrow. Expect completion of the floor and the theater by the end of next week. We began the demolition, Jeff Wong and myself, today, of the fire-damaged house at 161 Wood Street, and will hopefully have that completed tomorrow. And supervisors, we will be implementing, meeting, bi-monthly meetings of all our department head of engineering, architects, Vince Smith, Arizona Officer, for plan and review of projects. This, or the project team meetings will provide a more comprehensive review of all projects, both public and private. Private being developed in the city, even with new businesses coming into town. We'll gather, all of our people together in one spot, one time, and do the plan reviews, as opposed to having these sent out to each one of the department heads for individual reviews. We'll have a time to, and all, sit down and kind of look over the whole site plan as one group. Also, the Water Department, they continue to work on residential meter replacements. They installed two services on Leeson Drive, and on Water Drive, they're conducting tank sampling and repaired the entrance to Sam's Pizza that was damaged from a previous water leak. And I'll add, there's a, there's a, there's a brief announcement there in your package from Water about taste and odor. I encourage you to read that. And bottom line, they've been getting complaints, I think Nancy's been taking some complaints in City Hall. I complained a couple of weeks ago, actually didn't complain, I just asked, was, what was going on? And, you know, we, we have not had rain, and that produces stale water in the river. The leaves falling also add to that with the organics in the river. I assure everyone the water's safe to drink. They've been in touch with the health department, and all of the testing is done, is good. It's just the stale nature of the water. They're doing everything in their power right now to try to alleviate it. But until we get rain and increase flow in the river, we're going to have this problem.
It just doesn't taste good.
No, no, it doesn't. No, it, I know, my coffee tastes funny in the morning, it is. But, yeah. It is, it is, like I said, they're doing everything they can possibly do to try to alleviate, but short of having rain, it's not going to happen until we get a good rain. And I, I think we're supposed to get some rain towards the first of the week, so hopefully by next council meeting, this will be done.
They keep saying that we're going to get rain every year.
Ever since there's, ever since they did the rain dancer, the, the river walk, Remember Blessing the River. We haven't had any rain since. Thank you for the effective dance.
Nervous issues, no, no.
No, right now, there's, again, Tom, we're expecting the start of construction on that this month.
Oh, I thought it was.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't, he was asking about Victoria's little water tank. I think the start date was the 17th of October. So we've not had any issues. Sewer Department, projects completed, the Stormwater Tap at Jawbone by a bunch of aquifers been completed. The inlet installation off Bullard Way at Community Care Parking, working on that. And Leeson Drive Extension Phase One's been completed. The plant work clarifiers, 100% of the sand blasting's been completed, and one of the two arms to manufacture paint to follow approximately two weeks from completion. And a company called Graphic Controls has sent equipment for a telemetry trial at the sewer plant. The ongoing projects, the project on Swisher Street, I know Robbie has asked about that before, replaces the culvert crossing. The project now has a sewer component to it, which I reported last meeting. And they did some test excavating up there to ensure the location elevation for final design. So they're working on, in that area. I actually stole their excavator today to work on the house on Wood Street. They did some test holes up there, and they're starting to get that project.
The puppy's very upset that that alley now has been, you know, blocked off and cut apart. She can't, we have to change her, her walking route now, so she's, you know, she's unhappy. But everybody else is happy.
Can it go on jumping, or you?
Oh, no. Me.
She is a pretty pup, too.
Stormwater, extensive research for the stormwater. And again, the update is the, it's going to, right away, it's been requested from Rex Harris at Nine Maple Street to connect to Jawbone Creek. That's an issue up on Henry Street that they're going to have on the stormwater. Waste, we have waste board this evening, and I've got nothing new to report. There's actually a couple of things. Ambi has arranged the financing for the toders, the polycarts, if you got that, so good. I'll have to move forward on it. And the only other thing was that Waste Board had approved a, the waiving of fees for a bin for a community project that was being done for a person, one of the lawyers' projects that they were working on. Street Department, the Ameriprise project's been completed, except for the final landscaping. They'll be installing the whole benches up there tomorrow, and with the concrete pour for the basement of the theater. And be working on the sidewalk on the west of South Canal Street at First Community Bank. That's kind of our next project that, and continue on Trader's Alley as we can. And be working to complete the North Buchanan ADA improvements prior to the end of the year. Probably have a grant deadline at the end of this year for that project, so we'll get back there on that. And Engineering, they just received the upper picture survey, their waste board, and it's been completed in the deed plaque, it's been delivered to, unless there's questions.
City Seal Neuro Sidloft is coming up, sent to, right?
Well, the permit's been approved. Yeah, the permit's been approved, and we'll have to plug that one in, because we are under a timeline with the permit, so we'll plug that one in, hopefully, in between, or right after the park improvements are completed.
Sure.
Anticipate a couple, between it and the sidewalk at the bank, we anticipate a couple weeks on those two projects.
The guys have been discussing. Questions for Jerry Arnold?
I have a question, but the alley between Lincoln and Bockets, where you had that water, that holes, yeah, it's getting, sinking again in that area.
Actually, we dug it up.
You did?
Yes, blocked off, should you have been there?
We can get block top today. We were, we were going block top, but back today, and the plant was having issues, so we're supposed to have block top tomorrow for that.
It's blocked off?
Yeah, we dug it, that's why, it's because we dug it up.
Yeah, I saw that.
Any other questions for Jerry? I heard several comments on West Lincoln. Thanks for working on West Lincoln. People are much happier driving up that street now that's been paved from, I think, Henry area west. So thank you for doing that.
Yes, Dr. Laura Mathias, I thought I had stuck it in here, but I apologize for not doing that. She asked me to convey to the guys the appreciation for the payment in that area.
Thanks, Jerry. Appreciate it. To all the guys, we appreciate them as well. Laura Meadows, would you like to?
Sure. I apologize, I don't really want to talk, but it works. I've got copies, I've got one extra, I don't know, Katie got one this morning. So this has been a project that we're going to talk about, that we've talked about since I've been on board with the CBB, and I've been here for six years, and I think it was probably going on six years before I was in this position. And that's a sound system on Main Street. I believe the sound system on Main Street now is outdated. I don't know if it's even functioning now, but it is, if it does, it's probably limping through. And there's always been a conversation of how that can be utilized, and how beneficial it would be for the entire community. So probably about a year ago, we worked with Micrologic, and they could have bid together, and it was just to do a sound system on Main Street. The original bid was $25,000, but nobody had the money really to do it at that time. We, as the CBB, have been really fortunate to be, whenever we were developing the event center, we were really cautious with our money, and we've been able to put some money into our savings account. My board member. into our savings account and my board members keep telling me that I have to spend it. I can't just let it sit in our bank account. So basically, we brainstormed what would be the best project for all of Buck Cannon. We thought the sound system would be a good, a good thing to go for. So I'll just give you a little bit of a background. This is a quote from Micrologic to do the sound system. The CBB has committed $25,000 to go towards this project. The quote that you're looking at is for 27,500. This morning, the county commission committed the 2,500 to do all of Main Street, so we can successfully do Main Street starting whenever the guys are ready. But, and I'm going to give you my take on what this system does, but CJ and Jerry both know a little bit more about it, so if I'm miscommunicating something, don't bend. But basically, so this is going to cover Main Street. It's going to be hardwired with fiber that will run in some empty conduit right now. There will be speakers on alternating light poles on both sides of the street. It's going to be hardwired and it won't be Wi-Fi, so that way it's a much more secure system. The main brain of the system would be housed here at City Hall because that's where all the fiber is connected and this is just the most likely location to have everything to be accessible to staff, people and just the whole deal. There would be, with this quote, you'll see the extra $2,500 from the additional, from the original bid is to place some equipment in the Chamber Visitor Center office, just because we felt like if we're doing that $25,000 commitment, we felt like our office could help coordinate the day-to-day aspects of that. But I know some people have some inputs and we're all about, you know, some suggestions and ways how, it's going to be an evolving system, but we definitely will take music requests Tuesdays. Robbie said I need to fix that joke because it's not that good.
We went to Suba last night, they weren't, they weren't feeling that, so.
Or karaoke Saturdays or something, but I mean, we'll definitely be, have an open system of, you know, what works and what doesn't and tweak things. So that's kind of the, the brains of it with just the fiber optics and where the speakers will be posted, but the actual utilization of the speakers, you know, you think of canned music on Main Street, we'd really love to have this up before Christmas time, so that way we can have some Christmas music as people are downtown shopping. And just on a Tuesday afternoon in the middle of summer, just having some really light atmosphere music is just going to add an entirely new element to downtown Buck Cannon. Another aspect of this whole system and this whole project would have outside access panels at the courthouse steps, one at the CBB and currently right now, one at City Hall within this project, where people can plug in a mic or they can plug in auxiliary cord and they can do a live broadcast from that location. So if you think during Strawberry Festival, they're getting ready to kick off the strawberry auction and they can plug in their mic, they can say a brief announcement, we're going to be on the courthouse steps starting at 4:00 PM, come down for the strawberry auction, come out and join us and get back off and the music kicks back on and people know to make their way up to the courthouse. The other cool thing about the system is you can kind of grid it off. So if we know something's happening down in front of the courthouse and we want to have more mic, mic options, but we want to have music on the other end of Main Street, we can do that. There can be some manual switches made, so it's very flexible. The other thing is just a safety aspect, you know, if it's in the middle of Strawberry Festival and there's a lost child, that system is in place to broadcast to everybody downtown to be on the lookout for a child or just whatever announcement needs to be made. Now, I'll point out, okay, so this bid is for 27,500. The whole project is covered from the CBB's 25,000 and the county's 2,500. There has been some interest in possibly including Jawbone Park. Micrologic, we haven't received a firm quote from them, but they're estimating probably an additional $5,000 to cover Jawbone and that would be connected into the full system, but still be able to be grid off like I described earlier with courthouse doing one thing, Jawbone Park doing another. So I guess maybe at some point the city would want to consider covering the Jawbone Park expense.
I think we need to talk a little bit about that, but yeah, as much activity as we have down there, in particular as we evolve to expansion of the Jawbone theme over to the Public Safety Complex lot, we probably want to consider speakers there too.
Down the alley?
Yeah, well, perhaps. It's all something we need to think and talk about, but we're not ready to take action on it tonight.
Sure.
But I do have a question for you about, as we think about future repair, maintenance, those kinds of things, will the system, is there going to be a sort of a letter of representation from the CBB that, okay, city, it's yours and then we take care of it going forward? Or help me understand that element.
You know, honestly, I, I'm taking it on as, you know, if something breaks, it's going to be a CBB responsibility because we're, we're putting that investment in for the bulk of the system, so I think we're kind of taking, I don't want to say ownership, but we're taking some accountability for the longevity of the system. And, you know, we talked to Micrologic and we said, you know, what's, what's the lifespan? I mean, are we looking at five years, 10 years, 15 years? And they really felt confident with even a 10 to 15 year and they said, really, in that timeframe, what you might have is a speaker go bad and that's the least cost associated with the entire thing. The, the good thing is because it's hardwired, it's empty conduit, there's fiber, I mean, it's a much more secure system just from all of the elements too. So they felt pretty confident that it was going to have a long lifespan.
There are a couple of elements in your proposal that you need the city's cooperation on.
Right. Yeah, so regardless of including Jawbone Park, part of this, and this is a very big partnership effort between everybody, it's not just Micrologic doing the work, it's relying on city crews to go along and lifting all the bases of the light poles to go in. So I mean, that's going to have to be coordinated, so there's definitely some contribution from the city regardless.
So are you soliciting our approval to participate in that part of the process? Appreciate it.
I think you should do Jawbone too.
Well, let's.
I think that's on the agenda. I've got a couple of questions relative to this project. I think this would, if, if the CBB is going to maintain ownership of the system, then we'd probably have to get into a position where the city would grant the CBB right away.
Yeah.
As well as some kind of agreement to use the, use the light poles and formalize that written form. The other question I would have is, in light of the recent vandalism that we've seen on Main Street, how, how secure are these from vandalism? How resistant are they to vandalism?
With the outside access panels where people can plug in a mic, and that's one thing we thought about, they are going to be locked and they're going to be weatherproof, but I mean, people can always break into stuff. The good thing about this system again is if we know there's going to be a three-month span or even just a week span, that nobody's going to be utilizing that outdoor access panel from the main brain, brain here at City Hall, you can flip the switch. So even if they busted into it and plugged something in, they can't access the system. I mean, granted, the panel would be broken, but.
I'm really more concerned about people stealing speakers.
Well, I've had speakers in front of the building, in my building for years and no one's ever messed with them. The only thing that we've seen vandalized is flowers, which are just kind of attractive to people late at night who are intoxicated, I believe.
The height of the speakers, I believe, and I might be wrong, but I'm thinking maybe 10 feet. We were talking about it being above where the base of the flagpole is, but below the bracket of the banners or maybe vice versa, but.
Below it or above it, above it, the top it?
I think the, the flagpole base is above the bracket, correct? Because the bracket of the banner and then there's a space and then there's the, yeah, I think it would be right in between there. And, I mean, I don't know, I'd say 10 feet, but that is a concern, you're right.
Coach, I would entertain a motion that we pull F1 out of strategic issues and that we consider that matter now. Motion to lift that out of F1 so that we can take immediate action on it. I heard Mr. Rylands first and Mr. Skinner's second, so the motion is by Mr. Rylands the second, to his motion is by Mr. Skinner. Is there discussion on that motion? And this isn't to approve the project, it is just to lift it out of strategic issues. Call for the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Now the matter is mature for our consideration. You've heard the pitch, the proposal is an excellent one. We clearly want to work with our CBB to accomplish this. There will be some elements of this project that will require city in-kind service participation and as Mr. O'Neill has noted, we probably want to do at least a letter agreement, if not a formalized right of way for possible recordation in the county clerk's office. I would entertain a motion that we partner with our CBB to do this project. I have a motion by Mr. Thomas, I have a second by Mrs. Alba. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The minutes will reflect that the motion carries unanimously and Laura will connect you with Jerry and Tom and others and we'll, you know, we'll consider the Jawbone part of the thing here soon and maybe we'll, we'll do something even bigger.
I think, I think your Christmas thing is, if we can do it, that'd be great.
It'd be great, yeah, and if for some reason it doesn't work out with just everybody being too busy by Strawberry Festival, we'll be good.
Excellent. We appreciate you. Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you. I'll see you tomorrow.
Ambi has been champing at the bit to give us our good numbers, right? Good, bad or indifferent, we're going to, we're going to get on one way or the other. Mrs. Jenkins, would you like to bring us our financials?
Miss Susan, tonight I'm trying to write this.
Yeah, this is good. You're going to report on your own report?
Say whatever I want, right?
No. Yeah. You had it.
Well said, Ambi.
Yeah, blowing five inches. What else?
Okay, so your general fund balances for September 30th, the money market and checking was 804,428 dollars. Your CD's 82,720. Stalker View Center CD, capital campaign, 150,516. And your municipal stabilization, 510,711. Your revenue and expenditure report is in your packet. For the month of September, you had 491,000 dollars in revenues and you had 306,000 in expenditures. The total amount of revenues over expenditures was 184,000 dollars for the month of September. Report briefly on these Fall Fest, the mayor will probably talk about it, but we had a nice little Fall Fest this past weekend and some of the revenues we were collecting was for the Stalker View Center and some of the little projects and we got 711 dollars out of those, the wagon rides and vendors, the pet show and the raffle to contribute to Stalker and we'll put that into their capital campaign. I'll not talk too much about it, but Sue was here to talk about the Health Department and she worked really hard to be able to get that Narcan Free available to our police department in the training and she managed, you know, to get the authorization for a department from Dr. Reed to be able to acquire this for that department. So she worked hard there and then they do things like vaccinations for employees. I don't know if people realize how much our employees are exposed to things like hepatitis just in the general labor every day and we, we ask that they voluntarily be vaccinated for that and the Health Department works with us on that. And it makes it so much easier when you, when you don't have to arrange a doctor's appointment, you can just send them there and pay for the vaccine and they take care of it. Jerry mentioned in the waste collection meeting that the Waste Department's doing a couple, well, kind of a big project, it's called the, it calls it the toder program. I call it the polycart program. It's to, it's a program we're going to start here in the next 12 months to give 96 gallon trash cans to our customers and they'll be coded so we will know what customers have what trash cans and we'll be able to kind of eliminate some of these piles of garbage that, that are really, it's really hard to determine who's paying for the garbage in some of these areas. We do some things to tag system to try to curb it, but it still happens. So he, we got bids for a, from a company to get these toders and there's, for 6,000 of the polycart toders, we accepted bids and the cost of that's 290,880 dollars. Of course, we can't pay for that all once, so we got some financing through the local bank, First Community, it took quotes and they have, gave us a good interest rate for that 3% in five years. So we're going to go with financing, the Waste Board approved to go financing through First Community. And then the other financing, we're buying another road tractor to haul garbage and it is a 124,000 dollars, almost 125,000 dollars. And actually Citizens Bank gave us a good rate for that one and they voted to go with financing through Citizens Bank. Other than that, just a reminder about contingency fund, I put in your packet what you have in contingency and some of the things that you've committed to buy with the holiday banners. I, I'm just kind of reminding you so you'll know if you go expending any money, you'll know what it's for. Oh, one more thing, we'll work with Tom, he doesn't know that, we have Tom O'Neill for a policy. We're getting a digital sign and a company's bringing a digital sign, I think that was recorded in council, and the city gets so many seconds of advertising free for PSAs and I wanted to talk to Tom about a policy on what type of PSAs we want to put on there. And then we'll probably bring that back to council so they can vote on it. And that's.
Questions for Mrs. Jenkins?
Digital signs, that's the same thing that we talked about last year out on North Lotus Street.
Out of reach only. It'll be up probably the end of this month of the first of November.
Thanks, Amber. Appreciate you, good work, as always. City Attorney Tom O'Neill.
I feel, have the opportunity to attend a law firm retreat this past weekend and just for the benefit of the council and the visitors and the, and the viewers, just came away with this great quote that was in our closing, our closing session in our firm retreat. Every meeting that does not stir the imagination and curiosity of attendees and increase bonding and cooperation and engagement and a sense of worth and motivate rapid action and enhance enthusiasm is a permanently lost opportunity. So that's a great thought that, yeah, that I came across, because I go to a lot of meetings and I come out of there, many of them unmotivated. I'm so, I'm so.
None of the secret counsel?
No. All right, so let me, let me just speak to a few issues that we've been working on and some of these, two of these actually I'll come back to on F3 and F4. But I want to update the council with respect to one piece of pending litigation where the city was handed defendant, former employee Gerald Brown is suing the city. That matter was originally set for pre-trial tomorrow and trial a week from now. I received a call today from the plaintiff's attorney asking who would consent to continue the case and, and I, I consented to a, to a joint motion for continuance. So we're going to continue to seek to resolve, resolve the matter out of court and we'll, the matter will be continued for a period of 45 days and then we'll, if we cannot reach an agreement, we'll proceed. I feel, I feel good about our legal position and, but it's a matter of, you know, the other side's got to feel the same way, you know, they feel the same way about their position. So, so we'll bring in a third party mediator and hopefully attempt to, and then we will attempt to, to settle the, settle the case. Couple ordinances that are on the horizon, parking ordinance and revision of the Animal Care and Control Ordinance, those are two that are, that are coming on. And then of course, obviously ordinance 419 on second reading tonight and as well as a motion that is required by state law for reasons we'll get to when we come back to F3 and F4, but without that, I will, any questions?
I would note that the Animal Care and Control Commission met Monday and at the next council meeting, there'll be a recommendation, we didn't have it on the agenda at the time to do the three-day thing, but there'll be a recommendation in addition to those other tweaks to the ordinance that they had requested previously. tweaks to the ordinance that they had requested previously. We also wanna reconstitute the Animal Care and Control Commission. We don't have a vet that's willing to serve right now. The president of the Upshur County Humane Society doesn't wanna be on the commission. So there's only five members, me and two other at-large members, and if one of those at-large members.
They have a quorum.
Yeah, we didn't have a quorum the other day. There was a lot of good input from those who attended, but we, we need to reconstitute that body so that we can get people at the Lewis County Animal Shelter involved, maybe expand the composition of not just city of Buchanan residents, but maybe you could be a resident of Upshur County. Wouldn't hurt to have somebody that's interested in animals from outside the corporation.
And there are plenty of people.
Yeah, oh yeah. We've got lots of interest, it's just we've got these very narrowly, and at the time that we did that ordinance way back in 2000, it made sense. We had that nucleus of people who were then engaged in the process.
We have to check the charter to make sure that we're in a position to appoint non-city residents to city boards, probably with an animal, one that's not passing on, which is probably not be.
We have other boards and commissions that we do, but I don't think that's imperative. Some more following that. Questions or comments?
So hold off on any revisions to that until that recommendation passes.
Yeah, if you could, yeah.
We'll do.
That'd be terrific.
No problem.
Questions or comments for Tom McNeil? He's gonna come back up and visit with us again here in a few minutes when we get down to other strategic matters. Thanks, Amber. Pleasure feeling, buddy.
Thank you.
Fire Chief Jim Townsend. Says James Townsend.
Ooh, I've been promoted. Good evening. Today we had a nice culmination of some meetings and tabletops and discussions with Holbrook on the Hill, the, for lack of better, skilled nursing facility, very productive. First of all, before I even talk about how that went, you know, my career, I've seen a lot of convalescent homes and skilled facilities and retirement communities and it's one of the cleanest ones I've ever seen. The staff is pleasant, the residents seem to be very happy, so everybody that's involved with that facility should pat themselves on the back. It's a pleasant place to be. And we simulated a fire in their kitchen, they do all their own meal prep in there and with apologies to Mr. Rylands, we simulated a fire sprinkler total failure, but just to make it a little harder on us, but it went very well, learned a lot of things, do some after reports and actions and just generally make it a safer place for people to work and our loved ones to reside. And we worked very well with Upshur Easiness that was there and helped all along the way, Office of Emergency Services and 911 Center. Fire prevention week is this week, we're hot and heavy and probably reaching about 1,200 students altogether in our elementary and pre-K and middle school students. I don't know how long City of Buchanan's been doing this, but I know, excuse me, through the photograph at Colonial Theater, I think we determined that was in the early 60s.
Late 50s, early 60s, yeah, somewhere, yeah.
There's a great photograph of that auditorium or that theater full of kids, literally full of kids. And so it's been going on that long and actually we have a lot of fruit from that because we do not have a big fire problem, we don't have a big arson problem. We were very spread out and we don't have fast resources to every fire that occurs, but that's just part of rural living. But I think the decades of fire prevention talks to kids has really, really paid off. So we're real proud to continue that. Some of us will be attending a Fire Command Symposium, symposium next month. Bridgeport is hosting it, also the Southeast Fire Chiefs Association, who is, one of the members is Gary Bonnet Jr. I think I met his father way back. This symposium is dedicated to Gary Bonnet and the main speaker and instructor is Alan Brunessini. Every firefighter knows who that is, he's the now 83-year-old retired chief of Phoenix who brought everything we do good, fire command and organization, protective clothing, breathing apparatus, driving apparatus that is much safer. I mean, he is, he was a workaholic for many decades and it's gonna be a pleasure to see him on this side of the country. We're gonna try to take him to a little Mexican restaurant because he holds court, when he worked, he held court every morning at his favorite little Mexican restaurant in Phoenix and I never had to do that with him, so I hope to do that next month. But it'll be a good learning experience for all of us, all our officers and some future officers. And speaking of future officers, we are holding a firefighter one academy we started a couple, three weeks ago. We're holding it primarily in our facility, the firehouse that you provide us through WVU Extension and Chief George Stump, who is our assistant chief and a master instructor through WVU. The Baxa, the Brothers Baxa are two new, relatively new workers in the fire service instructors, cutting their teeth in this academy. Three out of the nine students are our very own, so they've been with us for a number of weeks and months and not actually been able to engage in fire until they finish this class. It's very difficult. Everybody knows that it's difficult to get volunteers and retain. One of the difficulties is finding this mandatory 120 hours of training. You know, we want people that are responsible, so typically they work and then we tell them, oh yeah, by the way, to join us, it's gonna take three weeks, three work weeks of time that we're not gonna pay you. And yeah, by the way, when you graduate, we're gonna ask you day and night to come and fight fires and we're not gonna pay for those either. So, you know, it's a tough task, but getting it a little closer helps and the motivation of the Baxas to become instructors wouldn't happen without them, so that's going on. I just kinda mentioned that probably need to begin a dialogue about apparatus purchases. We are, we've always had apparatus committees who decide what is the most appropriate apparatus for us to, to seek and to maintain, to sell or to bring into our fleet. That committee's been active for probably five or six months. You might have seen some of these brand-new apparatuses they brought in as demos, they're very sweet, they're very, they're very, they're very nice. Some of them are way out of our price, as far as features, we're able to look at the features, features of them. We'll probably or likely try to combine two apparatus into one to save money. One of our most aged in our fleet is our rescue unit, our heavy rescue unit, and it so happens, it's about 25 years old, it so happens to also be the only manual transmission, can't deny it. Some of us grew up with manual transmissions and we learned that in second nature. A lot of kids, or a lot of 18 to 35 and 40-year-olds have never shifted in their life. So we got, these people that we don't pay, we need them to drive apparatus and we need to make it a little easier and also safer. Everybody knows that if you push in the clutch and you're going downhill, you're gonna gain speed and it's dangerous, well, when the apparatus you're driving weighs up to 40 tons, it's just that much more dangerous, so automatic's the way to go for safety. For your safety as well.
You're much like an old vehicle.
And then finally, you know, I'm sure none of us have not, all of us have spent many hours glued to the tube last month looking at natural disasters especially, but then of course what happened over this past weekend, we do it too and, you know, we're learning, we're learning a lot of lessons. I would hope that those have been looking at these disasters over your decades, you can see it as much more organized, we get to people a lot quicker as an entire service in our country. We pre-plan much better and we're able to save a lot more lives. A lot of that has to do with weather prediction or satellites and stuff, but we still have to plan to meet these needs and there's been some great things that happen. We're trying to learn lessons from each one of them. I neglected to bring my phone, but as I was watching the Red Sox get beat before this meeting started tonight, he pretty bad. I got an email, so it was like, it was nice to be distracted and it was from, it was from Emergency Management Response, or Response Info Sharing Analysis Center. This is something born after 9/11 from Homeland Security where they send messages to managers and you'll see a lot of entries on Facebook tomorrow, Joey and I'll go through those, there's some very good stuff in it. Has already come just from Sunday. Things to look out for, things to do. It emphasizes run, hide, fight and, you know, if you imagine this government, unlimited access, unlimited ammunition, you didn't even spend it all and 22,000 people 20 years ago, a lot more would have been injured just from not running, just from not hiding and of course the people, not just from my profession and the police profession, nurses and doctors, but everyday people that stopped help, saved just literally hundreds of lives. So we're all learning, it's terrible things that happen, but at least if we learn from it, you know, it can be a better outcome the next time. So we're all, we're learning as best we can.
Thanks, Jim. Any updates on accreditation? We're gonna be cracking that up here soon, I guess.
Well, speaking of baseball, yeah, strike one on CFI because I finally got an email back because I've been bugging Ambie, but you know, has anything come? And bugging the guy, said, you forget to give me a little box of some books or something and they apologized and said they haven't overlooked, so they're gonna get right on it and she'll probably have something in the mail. Just the material.
Questions for Chief Townsend?
And just, did you wanna go to the other item while I'm here or have you come back up?
Oh, I think it's more informational, isn't it?
Well, as I recall, it wasn't agendized in the past, so it's not necessarily approved?
Counsel F2 is the request by the Buchanan Fire Department to purchase a drone and they have that in their budget to do that, do they not?
No.
Changed your mind after you told them they had money in their budget?
No, no, me and I talked about that and he was going, what we talked about was that he was going to take it, he had some turnout here and that we were going to review the budget again in January to see if we could allocate for that.
But you'll probably have the resources.
Sure, boy. I mean, I don't even know the cost of the drone yet.
Can we short pull a 911 since we're gonna go through correspondence and the consent agenda like that, I think?
I'm not, I'm not trying to get out of here, I'm just.
I mean, unless your meatloaf is ready to.
No meatloaf today.
We'll yell back to you in just, or two, three minutes. All right. All right, correspondence and information, boy, you got a ton of stuff. You've got the thank you note from Kathy and Beth who visited here a couple of, three weeks ago from West Virginia Municipal League. You've got flyers for Halloween kickoff week, Colonial Theater on October 27th, the haunted Walk Trail is the 28th. We anticipate that there will be a HOW, H-O-W-L-O-E, that'll feature our local canines in Halloween costumes on the 29th at the River Trail. The 30th is trunk or treat down in the Public Safety Complex lot that is primarily sponsored by the Police Department, but all the city entities get in on the fun. And then trick-or-treat is October 31st, 6 to 7:30. Just as a reminder, the notice and timeline concerning the information grants coordinator position is again in your packet. There's a notice from the Buchanan Fire Department, a media release discouraging outdoor burning. Notice of public hearing regarding the proposed adoption of ordinance 419, that's the sewer rate increase. Buchanan Housing Authority addressing and mapping letter is in your packet. There's a letter to West Virginia DHSEM regarding emergency power generator application that Jay Holland has worked up. Buchanan has won the West Virginia Department of Environmental Protection's 2017 Clean Community Award, another neat little thing to add to our list of awards. There is going to be a free digital currency class that Mary Thorpe is instructing three different days, October 4th, the 17th and the 25th. I think we already missed that one on the 4th. There's a letter to Jason Hill regarding a damaged light pole that Jerry sent out that he had mentioned to us at the last council meeting. And there is a letter from Sudden Lake Communication regarding notification that the Blaze Channel will no longer be available. Peter Brown will be here soon from Sudden Lake to announce some exciting additions to the cable lineup, but I don't wanna steal his thunder, he'll be here soon to fill us in on that. So that's all correspondence and information as we drop to the consent agenda.
David, on the trick-or-treat, if the person doesn't have their porch lamp on, the, I would say that the trick-or-treater shouldn't go to that house.
Is that the Dave Thomas rule of Halloween etiquette?
Well, I think most people, they don't.
Common practice.
It's pretty common sense, I think. Just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, that's, that was always the rule of thumb when I was a kid, about 10 years ago now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just wanted to throw that in.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Consent agenda, five items, the approval of the minutes of our last regular meeting on September 21, the approval of our building and wiring permits, the approval of the payment of the general fund bills, and then two matters concerning the Buchanan Housing Authority. Sarah Carr has resigned and that body has requested the appointment of Helen Shields in her stead. I would entertain a motion that we approve our consent agenda.
Sub move.
I have a motion by Mr. Skinner and I think I heard Mrs. Alba second that motion, is that correct, Mrs. Alba?
Yes, sir.
Is there any discussion on the approval of the consent agenda? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving our consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign motion carries. Now, we are back down. We've already addressed F1, which is our partnering with the CBB concerning the downtown sound system. That takes us to F2. Chief, you wanna come back up again? We've talked a little bit about this a time or two, about the approval for purchase of a drone. Lay it on, Chief, what do we, what do we gotta do? An ambial. Chime in.
The reason, and it's not, it's not, it was never budget requested, so just the need or the apparent need or the desire to have it came up after the budget process, just by use, just by certain incidents. And we talked about it, I think it was when the cameras weren't here, so that might not be recorded that well, but I think you had mentioned, you or the, or the council in general had mentioned some part of, some fund to pay. It's about a thousand-dollar item, about 1,500 if you add a couple of extra batteries and insurance or replacement warranty, kind of varies.
That's correct.
But I do recall Ambie saying that, go ahead and do it from our budget and, you know, I just don't wanna get caught short resolved, but mentioning our reconciliation up in here. I'm sorry.
What's the benefit, Jim?
Just, well, the incidents we've used it on are snowpack accumulation, water accumulation, this hasn't happened lately, but water accumulation on roofs, several hundred thousands of pounds.
Search and rescue.
And search and rescue with missing people and boys fishing. I mean, those all came up within a few months of each other. The one that went down to the water's edge, the boys' bikes were gone, we couldn't find the boys, that was, that was a strong bro account and just actually, we need a drone and I just called Councilman Skinner and he was there in less than 10 minutes and we did his stuff, but he just happened to be around, so I think we'll use it several times a year.
And it'll be used by other departments within the city, like the police department and so forth?
I would say that departments need it for needs, they would certainly, I'm sure we could do that.
You're not gonna loan it out to here, are you?
Balancing that against. Balancing that against.
Operate it.
Balancing that against that coverage with, with emergency personnel, but we could cross train it too. We would, we wouldn't be trained to, I don't know, Colonel, how long did it take you to get your wings?
Not too long. Not too long.
But, you know, the training wouldn't cost anything. There is a small permit just to own one, but there's not training requirements. The training we, or the time we use to learn to fly it would be already compensated time, so there's no overtime involved, but.
I knew that we purchased.
Ambi's correct. We kind of negotiate this, so really this is kind of a moot point. I'll spend the money, I'll get it, and we'll try to reconcile it at the end of the year.
We got it. We got it. I know we. She says she got it. You got it.
Oh, we got it.
I'll talk to you about it.
Okay. This is my oversight.
So we don't have to.
We don't need a motion.
No. Well, we're glad you're going to get it.
That's what I asked earlier.
It's not in the budget.
Yeah, but do we, the question is, on the agenda, it says approval of this.
Yeah, we had, you had directed me to talk to him about it and I talked to him about it. I told him, as we talked, that we would probably have this at mid-year. You're only talking a thousand dollars. Now, you could take it out of your contingency if you want to do that, but I feel sure they're going to have it in their budget coming into year. They can take it out of their budget that they have, they had allocated for turnout here.
If you get in pinch and you're out of money and you still want to get the drone here in the next couple of months, we would appropriate that, but I think if you're comfortable.
You're right.
Does, does anybody have any objection to the fire department acquiring a drone? A drone, if the drones come later.
If it only cleaned houses, that's what I'm.
Well, they have those, those have been around for years. All right, thank you.
Yeah, that's a robot.
F3, excuse me, I'll check up there, is the second reading on ordinance 419, which is our sewer rate ordinance. Tom and Neil, you want to reacquaint us with that?
Yes, there's a copy of the ordinance in your packets. I'll read it by caption. Ordinance number 419 of the City of Buchanan and ordinance first, amending, modifying, and reenacting ordinance numbers 233, 291, 295, 307, 333, and number 403 of the City of Buchanan and Article 917 of the codified ordinances of the City of Buchanan. And secondly, specifically establishing new sewer rates and charges for sanitary sewage collection and distillable services provided by the sanitary board of the City of Buchanan. This, if you'll recall from our prior meeting, is an ordinance which, which has two step rates, stepped increases to sewer rates for the city, 10% each, in order to maintain for, maintain the 1/8 capital fund required by state code, which we do not, which the sanitary board does not have right now, and also to provide for coverage of ongoing expenses within the operation of the sanitary sewer system. The accounting firm that was retained to, to analyze the finances of the sanitary board, Smith, Cochrane, Hicks, has found essentially, put it another way, that sanitary board's current rates are not actuarially sound and that these increases are necessary in order to provide sufficient operating capital in order to maintain a level of service necessitated by the State Board of Health and even the United States Environmental Protection Agency. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Don't forget, folks, that the biggest part of the drive for this increase is the relatively new state mandate that requires us to have 1/8 reserve of the total revenue generated by our sanitary board. There is a state mandate that we have those monies available and we haven't.
We're short.
Yeah, we're well short. So if we have a $2.5 million a year entity, we got to have 1/8 of that.
Yeah.
Couple of hundred thousand bucks that we don't have in that reserve fund, so that's, that's a big driving force.
And I think it bears, and I said this at the last meeting, I just think it bears saying again, just for the benefit of the public, if nothing else, that the steps that the board and the city employees have taken over the years to do a lot of work in-house, like we saw, as you mentioned earlier with clarifier, has saved that board and the city over 100,000, I would say hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so we are looking at, this ordinance provides for lower increases than would otherwise be necessary if not for the, in my opinion, my considered opinion, the excellent stewardship of the city employees.
And even with the increase, we're in the bottom tier, lower about 35%, the second tier goes into effect, it'll take us up to about 40%, unless the other cities above and below us also increase their rates.
Yeah, those comparisons are always a snapshot of time, but you know, if all else being equal, my understanding is that we would still be in the bottom half of rates.
If nobody else increased their rates, we would still be in the lower half of those almost 400 regulated.
Because Tom, I think your observation of 100,000, I think it's well into hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of savings.
So we could be in a, we could be, could have been, I should say, could have been in a much more difficult position than we are.
Well, a whole new sewer plan would cost 25 to 30 million dollars.
I don't think we're in a difficult position. We're just, it's a costly business.
Well, and nobody likes to see.
Either leg is a deal. In-house, rather than house source.
And, and part of this is related to reduced water consumption and all the things too, so everybody make sure you're wearing your faucet and your brush and your.
That's a joke.
I'll just open that.
I would entertain a motion that we approve ordinance 419 on the second of three readings. We have a legal ad that is just starting to run as a class two, I believe. I have a motion by Mr. Thomas. May I have a second to his motion?
Second.
I have a second by Council Lady Capery. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
May, may I note one further thing, Mr. Mayor, that the reason we're doing three readings, we're only required to do two readings. We're doing a third reading just in the interest of transparency and to get the, make sure that the word gets out and people aren't shocked and surprised when they get their bill. And in fact, the, the increase has to be noticed on the bill before it can actually take, billing period before it can take effect and so.
There will be a public hearing. Anyone that feels agreed by the proposed adoption of the ordinance at the next council meeting, too, on October 19th. So I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thanks, Tom.
Sure.
Unanimous.
F4, yeah, the, Mr. Thomas wants the minister to reflect that the motion carries unanimously. The, there's a matter pertinent to the West Virginia road bond election this Saturday that Ambi asked to be placed on the agenda. With any state election, there is an opportunity for us to declare or not declare a state holiday. And since this is on a Saturday, the thinking is that we should not declare it as a state holiday and hence not have to pay holiday pay to those few employees who will be working on that Saturday. I understand that we're talking a person or two at the water and sewer plant and a couple of police officers and a couple of firefighters, so it's, it's a limited, it's a limited group.
Just to clarify the code, it would, this only applies to police, the civil service.
Police, if I, we don't need to worry about the.
Any of the, any of the other staff, there's already provisioned code that if a special election's held on a Saturday, that, that it is not considered a legal holiday for purposes of time and a half, overtime, overtime work, except for civil service employees, in which case the council has to pass a motion declaring that the holiday is not a holiday for, election day, special election, not a holiday for city purposes. So it's just for the fire and police departments.
Very good. I would entertain a motion that the City of Buchanan will not recognize for any payroll purpose Saturday, October 7th as a state holiday.
Sub move.
I have a motion by Mr. Skinner. May I have a second to his motion?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Thomas. Is there discussion on that motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Comments and announcements. Mrs. Alba, yay is for apple.
Woo. Yay is for Jack. Remember that.
Okay. One thing I wanted, and I could talk to Andy about this maybe tomorrow, about putting a message on the bill about cats running free. We've had, I've had several complaints about that and, and that's a good way to get the word out to people, right? Okay, good. So we'll take care of that. Also, I want to let the water department know that I trust you when it comes to providing us safe water, because I always have. We've always had safe, great water for years. And also thanks to Jerry Arnold and his crew because the cutoff between Bogus and Lincoln Street's going to be blacktop tomorrow, that's going to be done, and I'm glad of that. And Mayor, and CJ, are donations still being accepted for the old theater?
Sure.
Renovations for that?
Absolutely.
Okay, so if anybody wants to donate, I just gave mine to Jerry, but he can take it to Bryson.
Yeah, we, we have a capital enhancement account here at City Hall. Anyone that wants to come in, your gift will be received and we'll put it in there, dedicated toward the theater. You can do the same thing for the new auditorium, gymnasium at Stocker, the dog park, or any of these things. Absolutely.
All right. That's what I wanted to confirm. There you go. Thank you. And other than that, next meeting we will be talking more about Veterans Day, the plans for that, and be getting some announcements out, so contacting a lot of the youth groups and that kind of thing, so.
Sure. Thank you, Mrs. Alba. Council Lady Capery?
Just want to thank Jerry Arnold and all the crews who put together the First World Festival. Everything turned out great, except I was very disappointed in the public for not showing up. You know, we put a lot of hard work in and tried to do things for people and they're always complaining, there's nothing to do, and it was a shame that they did not come out. I enjoyed it.
Good times.
Jerry Arnold, pretty good, it's great.
I know why.
Anything else, Pam? Mr. Ryland?
We had a couple of visitors from Montgomery, West Virginia today. If you're not aware, that's where the West Virginia Tech, I believe, was. So they, they are a small town that has lost their college and they have a lot of empty infrastructure and they're trying to recreate theirsself. And they were visiting with us. They were told that Buchanan has things going on and we're, we're working together as a community and so we met with them and talked about some of the processes that we, we follow and how we have worked things out together. So, you know, the word is apparently out around the state that, that this is a community that everyone's ideas are important and we all need to work together in the community's best interest. So that was a validation for the work that we've been doing here and we look forward to helping them any way we can.
Thanks, CJ. Rob Skinner?
Mayor. Let's see, we have, the Buchanan Aperture Chamber of Commerce is partnering with the DHHR, actually on October 19th, which is the day of our next meeting, but it'll, by the time we have our meeting, it'll already have been passed. We're having a career fair over at Westland. It's going to be in the Benedictum Campus Center, which is upstairs in the social hall portion of the campus center. It's going to be from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Lunch will be provided by Aladdin. We are trying to encourage people to, to come out with resumes and be prepared for onsite interviews. There'll be, there'll be several local companies and regional companies present to, to offer hopefully positions. Oil and gas is starting to pick back up a little bit in the region, so this is a good opportunity for local people to, to take advantage of a, of a local career fair. So we're happy to be, from a chamber perspective, be partnering with the DHHR. Secondly, Laura, myself, Rob Hinton, and Sam, we went up to SUBA last night. Laura was the speaker and she did an excellent job presenting to SUBA, but there's some concern, SUBA is considering folding. And that has been a dynamic organization in the southern part of this county for many years, much to the credit of Hunter and Jane Anderson years ago, and then to Glenn and Joanne Hawkins more recently. They need help and they have an aging membership. It is not a, it's not a large investment to become a member of SUBA. I believe our business pays $20 a year, that is the, that is the membership for SUBA. And they're real, they're needing some leadership, they're needing some volunteers, they're needing some lifeblood pumped back into their organization. And Michelle Strater and Wayne have done an excellent job of, and Patrick Martin as well, of kind of heading that organization up with the Hawkins family for a few years and with anything, you know, you, you put in time and you hope that the next group of people will step behind you and, and take the reins of the organization. They are welcoming interest. You can contact them, you can contact the Rock Cave Banks District Fire Department for quest, with questions. You can contact the Rock Cave IGA, or you can contact Strater and Associates, which is Michelle and her husband who have the accounting firm up in Canal Head. So they've had as low of attendance at their meetings as, as low as five. So I would ask that folks in this community, I mean, we're all part of Upsher County together. It's not south versus north or downtown, urban versus out in the country rural. There's a lot of businesses and members that are part of SUBA that live here in Buchanan and care very much about what goes on in that part of our, of our county. So I would ask that we do some searching and you can access their directory at SUBA by obtaining one of their, one of their membership booklets and they are, they're scattered around the community, so you can see who's a member and, and if you know someone that you think might be a, a good person to, to help lead that organization, give them a call and, and give the Straters a call. I know they'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Skinner. Mr. Thomas?
Just a few things about what Mary said about the cats. We all have to remember, we have neighbors and if we have dogs and cats, don't let them roam around on your other neighbor's property. It's not appropriate and be respectful to, to your neighbors. The, I don't do this very often, but on October the 20th, the CAC, the Child Africa Center is having a fundraiser. It's a semi-formal, formal. It's to raise money. It's from 7:00 to 11:00. $25 a pop or 45 for a couple. There'll be hors d'oeuvres and a cash bar, but it's for a great, great organization that really needs help in helping children. So if anybody would like to go to wear a suit or some people even wear tuxes, I think it's an appropriate thing. Love to see you there. And I, I was at the chapel last Friday with the few comments, the mayor, I thought, did a fine job welcoming everybody. And unfortunately, you know, people get on Facebook and just blast everybody. I'm very fortunate, I don't get on Facebook and if I did, I'd probably get off it anyway. But we all need to work together and be a community and there are differences of opinions that we have sometimes very strongly, but my position. But my position would be, if you have a difference of opinion, pick up the phone and call somebody or go see them. Just don't throw it out on Facebook. I think that's one of the things about technology, it's phenomenal, it's really added a lot to our world and our society, but there's a downside to it, and I think that's very unfortunate. But they left what you did a nice job on Friday night, and, you know, we need to keep working together. That's it.
I don't have a formal statement to close with, but I did give you an updated community calendar of events, and I'd like to review those, because October's going to be a busy old place in the old town. First, on Sunday, October fifteenth, is the Third Annual Diversity Appreciation Day. It's a thing that we have partnered with between the college and the city, third year. You might remember back in two thousand and four, the great Charles Warfield was the first African-American principal at the old Victoria Black School. That's what it was called, Victoria Black School. While we dedicated Warfield Way back in two thousand and four, street signs got stolen and it kind of became a, you know, just kind of, there's no identification of Warfield Way anymore. So, as part of our ongoing effort to recognize famous Upsher Canyons, we're going to reinstall the new street sign on Baxter and Sedgwick. So, there'll be the double-sided signs that will bear Warfield Way and Baxter Street and Warfield Way and Sedgwick Street. And that's at one o'clock on Sunday, October fifteenth. That'll cap off Westleyan's homecoming weekend. We've got a nice biographical placard that we have worked up in cooperation with Charles Warfield III. Charles Warfield III is well into his seventies, and when I contacted him, because I had the letter that I did back in two thousand and four, I didn't know whether he was even still alive or anything. I got him in Columbus, where he lives. He answered the phone and he got emotional on the phone and said that he had barely survived cancer the past two years, and now he knows the reason why he, you know, survived. It was so that he could come down and honor his grandfather again. His family's coming, they've provided me all kinds of biographical information to put on the placard, and it'll be a very nice event. We have committed, Jerry Arnold's ready to kill us, but we have committed to having the Colonial Theater ready, and we have received preliminary thumbs up from the State Fire Marshal's Office to have the Buchanan Community Theater folks perform twice, the Rocky Horror Picture Show, on Friday, October twentieth, and Saturday, October twenty-first. So, that'll be a fantastic opportunity to show off the old place. The old floor has been completely razed. The thing is just a giant shell right now. But tomorrow afternoon, the concrete pillars are going to be poured. Early next week, the steel beams will go across and they will start tacking on the new floor. We'll do some preliminary electrical work and get things ready for, again, Friday and Saturday, October twentieth and twenty-first, Buchanan Community Theater's production of the Rocky Horror Picture Show. Then, on Thursday, October twenty-sixth, I'll tease you with the small version of the sign. We are going to honor the late, great Ross Strait. It's hard to believe Ross has been gone more than three years already. We're going to celebrate Ross's, what would have been his sixty-sixth birthday in Jawbone Park, right beside the Bokanga Halas and Mahonigan statue. Should be an excellent event. Molly and Hans are going to be there, so come down and greet the Straits. The new rock bench that has the drilled-out floodlight in it that will shine upon the Indians, it's ready to be installed. The footer has been poured, so come down for what'll be a very nice affair as we recognize Ross Strait. On the next evening, at six o'clock, in front of the Colonial Theater, we're hoaxing up another one of those Halloween kind of things for downtown, we're going to kick off the Halloween weekend in front of the theater, not inside the theater, on the outside of the theater, with the out-of-this-world dedication as we further memorialize and recognize great Barker. We've got a little trick or two up our sleeves that will become more evident that night. On Saturday, October twenty-eighth, beginning at six PM and going to midnight, will be the Haunted River Trail. The first two hours will be more for kids, little kids, or as Ambu put it in the flyer that she can drive, the faint of heart. And then at eight o'clock, the wild, real zombies with real chainsaws will chase everybody down and try to kill people, right? It's not that bad. It'd just be scarier, right? From eight to midnight will be the scarier stuff. On October twenty-ninth, while it's yet to be formally approved by Consolidated Public Works, the plan is to let the dogs dress up. Reid, you want to talk about Halloween? H-O-W-L?
Halloween.
Halloween.
There'll be some volunteers out on the riverwalk, so the dogs can trick-or-treat as well. Of course, you don't want to leave the canines out, and there'll be a contest, more details to follow.
More details to follow. Trick-or-treat is in the Public Safety Complex lot on Monday, October thirtieth. Ambu, six o'clock to eight o'clock, six to seven-thirty? I'm trying to remember.
Six to eight.
Six to eight, in the Public Safety Complex lot. And then our Halloween trick-or-treat is on Halloween, Tuesday, October thirty-one, from six to seven-thirty. So, lots of stuff. I share Pam Stutz on the Fall Fest. It, yeah, there were, Thursday night, the place was packed, Wednesday night was pretty sparse, Friday was a mixed pack. Saturday, depending upon the time of day, we had about fifty, sixty folks down for the pet show and, you know, times the carnival was busier than others. I would remind the council that our arrangement, our agreement with the Turner family, we haven't yet concluded how well they did, but we will receive twenty percent of their gross yield. So, those funds will be applied to things like the Stocker Youth Center Auditorium Gymnasium project and the Colonial Theater project, so all good stuff. I appreciate everyone being here this evening, and it's almost nine o'clock. I would entertain a motion, we adjourn.
Sub move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second to that motion? I have a second by Council Lady Capery. I'll call for that question. All those in favor of adjournments signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. We adjourn. Thank you.